Okay, Brazos County Commissioners will meet in a workshop. It's nine thirty on October the fourteenth. First item is called order, and second is presentation discussion of the second draft of Brazos County subdivision regulations diagnostic report by Freeze and Nichols.
You want to leave it? Who's leaving? Yeah?
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Judge. All right, well, thank you for having us here today. What we're gonna do, we're gonna just go through the top highlights. I have an agenda here that we can sort of see on the screen. I'll do quick little introductions. My name's Daniel Harrison. I work for a company called Freeze and Nichols. I'm a planner. So what me and my team, David Jones and Connor Roberts, do, we work with counties and cities with development. So we look at development regulations. So when we're talking about county subdivision regulations, the standards that go along with those regulations in the city realm. We work with zoning as well. So when we look at development going on from, you know, dedicating roads to building structures, that's what we're involved in. Also, conference of plans, that's more on the city side, but some of our counties have been taking efforts to do more on the planning side. So really, planning and development, that's what we do at Freeze and Nichols, and that's what my group is involved with. And so subdivision regulations, that's sort of what we, what we live with or live in. So, so today's agenda, we're gonna talk a little bit about the overview of the project. We'll highlight our fifteen priority findings. We'll go over some of the changes from our first workshop, and then we'll talk about wrap-up and sort of next steps in the process. So looking at our process in June, we had our project kickoff meeting. In July, we had interviews with stakeholders, so that was county stakeholders. Interviewed the commissioners' court. We interviewed city staff. We interviewed the staff of the cities in Bryan and College Station. We also talked with developers. I had a meeting here. So what that was really designed to do is to hear from people working with the subdivision regulations on a day-to-day basis. What they saw were some of the main issues with the current subdivision regulations. So we got to hear from them, what they thought were some of the struggles that they had, what was working well, just really about development in Brazos County. So we had that input process that we did, and then we developed the diagnostic report, looking through the different documents that, that the county has. Created the diagnostic report. Then on September fifth, we had our first workshop where we presented that, that entire report to you, and we went item by item through each one of those things that we identified. And then here today, we're just going back through and going back to the, to the top fifteen, wanted to highlight those and what we changed from the last time. And then really moving, moving forward here, we can make any changes to this document right now, however we'd like to word that. And then we'll submit to you a, a final document. And that really gives you a leg up and a good headway into updating your subdivision standards. And so what that could look like is having an updated subdivision regulations document, an engineering standards manual, development application handbook that has all your application forms and your checklist, all these things that are gonna help communicate to developers, to the community. When developing, we have a clear process. We'll have flow charts. Our flow charts would be part of that. And then what do I need to do if, if I'm developing in the county to, to clearly know what to do and get that process started and completed? And so this diagnostic report is a very useful tool because all those issues have been identified moving forward. And like I said, we wanted to hit on the top fifteen. So the way that the document's structured, that's the table of contents over there on the right side of that slide. But we have an introduction that really explains what's going on and the purpose of the document. We looked at some adopted plans and policies that the county has. We'll, we'll highlight that here in just a second. Then what we're focusing on today is that third bullet, the priority findings and, and action items. We have fifteen of those. And so those are really the higher level things that we think we need to talk about. Then we have, we went section by section through the subdivision regulations, and so we have findings and solutions. We, we won't dive into those today like we did at, at the last workshop, but that went into each section, say like what things would be beneficial to change here based upon the input that we've received. So let's take a look at those priority findings and actions. So priority finding, number one, is talking about updating the subdivision regulations. On each one of these slides, I'll, I'll show you a little bit about, you know, sort of the feedback that we heard from people in that little comment bubble there. But really organizing topics over multiple sections to ensure information is not duplicated. Heard a lot of feedback that, yeah, there's, they're sort of difficult to get through this document. There's some, some duplication. That comment that you see there is, document's not user-friendly, folks looking through the replat, folks looking just for replating or something simple are struggling to use it. So that's something that we can do in the document is to really get that updated and formatted. So if someone's just looking to how do I, how do I split my family lot? How do I do these things? We can have that all identified very well in the organization. Number two, what we had was revise the inter-local agreements with the cities of College and Bryan Station, uh, College Station and Bryan. What we found out talking, talking to the staffs is the, the inter-local agreements have been in place for, for a long time. And then when the county updated the subdivision regulations back in, in twenty sixteen, tho- those updated regulations and the inter-locals that are in existence aren't really talking to each other. And it's still just really resting on the inter-local agreements that were adopted back in the early two thousands. So that's one of the things that we need to go ahead and to, would recommend taking a look at updating that and working with both of those cities because they have the most ETJ, of course, in the county. And to work with them because the purpose of having those inter-locals, the state law requires counties and cities to, in the ETJ area, have an inter-local agreement. So if I'm a landowner and I'm gonna submit a plat, I know I either go to the county to get my plat approved with the commissioners' court, or I go to one of my cities and go through their, whether it's the PNZ or the council, dual approval sometimes, or if it's a staff approval. So really, who's the approval authority? And that's what that inter-local is really set up for. And the thing about the inter-locals is with changes to state law with the ETJ, regardless of, you know, sort of the current state of that law, and whether it's legal to, you know, let people out of the ETJ. The question still arises, you know, are there certain parts of an ETJ that a city wants to have that plating control over? Are there ways that we can petition that? So county's responsible for this area, city's responsible for this area. So there's things to take a look at. And talking to both of, both of the city staffs, it seems like both those cities would like to have the, have the ETJs still under, under, in the inter-local agreements going through the city planning process as the primary approval authority. So, but when the update process goes, that's the important to say, well, we need to establish when these roads are built out in the ETJ. Those aren't actually gonna be city-maintained roads because they can't maintain the roads outside of the city limits. So are those gonna be county-maintained roads? Are those gonna be privately maintained roads? Are those roads gonna be maintained by a municipal utility district or a MUD? So there's different things that we can take a look at with those inter-local agreements. And that's, once again, those things are a little, they have to be crafted, they have to be approved by the commissioners' court. They also have to be approved by the city council. So it's, it's just like any inter-local agreement you do with, with one of your partner cities.
Question on that one. Two completely different perspectives towards Senate Bill twenty thirty-eight and between the two cities that whose ETJs we deal with in Brazos County. April of twenty-five, we'll probably have a resolution on what that's gonna be. You know, I've heard stuff that's been submitted. I haven't looked at any prefiled bills, but the, e- either, one extreme would be is to just totally do away with ETJs. The other would be limit the size of ETJs down to a smaller jurisdiction beyond the city limits. And really, as far as I'm concerned, the ILAs are, they're up in the air until April of next year, which is the first time that we're gonna actually see corrective or different legislation submitted relative to what's, what, what the ETJ is actually going to be. And I don't think we can make any real progress there. I mean, with the city of Bryan, apparently, it's kind of like, okay, that's fine that we're, we're good with that. But the city of College Station has some concerns. I've talked with some people there too, in the city. But they're, I mean, until April of next year, do we really know? Does it really make sense for us to be oriented towards crafting an ILA with the city of College Station?
You might want to just be prepared because let's say we don't know what the state legislature is gonna do, and, and the big question is, as you pointed out, the state legislature, since they've limited what cities can do in the ETJ, annexations aren't really happening because they're only voluntary annexations. So if the state legislature says, no more ETJs, well, then the cities can't apply their subdivision regulations. So everything now that is in Bryan or College Station's ETJ, when they submit a plat, it'd be going through the commissioners' court. So, and it'd be reviewed by the subdivision regulations that we have currently on the books and the engineering standards or, or like thereof, you know? So it, it's sort of, we would sort of, as a county, I think, need to be prepared to say like, the legislature sort of signaled they're, they could be heading that way. Now, now maybe they go on a different course and they, they leave ETJs alone, but it's sort of been, each legislative session, it's been sort of whittled, those cities and their ability to control what happens in those ETJs has been whittled down. So it would probably be a good thing to say, probably need to take a look at the subdivision regulations and try to have those updated before that would happen from the legislature. So I probably would go in back to September one or something like that, or maybe it'd be June one or something like that, but hopefully get the updated subdivision regulations. If not, they would just be under the current regulations that the county has right now. But there's some, as we see here, there's opportunities for improvement and clarification. I mean, we want to be able to, when a developer or a landowner comes in, we want them to be able to really understand and, and go through the process quickly and, and not have any confusion and to know what's required. And so it, time is important to, to get that processed and approved. So, so I think the subdivision regulations are important, but yes, I, I agree, it's probably a good thing to wait on the ILAs with the cities till after, after you get the sub.
So what I hear you saying is, is let's get the subdivision regulations uniform in the county regardless of whether ILAs or, and ETJs are pertinent or not?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Priority action, number three, talked about adopting the county, adopted county thoroughfare plan or addendum to the MPO thoroughfare plan concept. Just a comment there, the MPO adopted a thoroughfare plan for the arterials and highways and College Station tied into them by adding collectors. This leads to problems when the county is not requiring different, different right-of-way. So when we look at the MPO thoroughfare plan concept, we do have arterials, but there's some opportunities to, if we're trying to have collectors submitted and to be built according to that greater thoroughfare plan network that we're trying to connect to through the entire county, that's something we need to consider. So we have some different options that we have. We could look at developing a county thoroughfare plan with the MPO to, you know, add those collectors to sort of see like, okay, we, we know the big larger streets, but how are people gonna, you know, as we get to more fine-tuned development, how are people gonna connect those different ways? Option two is just work with the MPO to update that thoroughfare concept. We have a map, maps in the, in the report, so you can see that. Then also option three, amend Article seven, Section C five to match the roadway types of the thoroughfare concept to ensure that minor arterials can function as collectors. So there's some language that we can amend in the subregs to say like, on that MPO concept map, those minor arterials is what we'd be, or, yeah, minor arterials is what we'd be considering as collectors. And then the last option is to revise the, the county's engineering design guidelines and subdivision regulations to include the standards for, for collector roadways, sort of some spacing standards that we can have in there. So there's different options that, that we, we can, we can sort of try to pursue as a county to make sure that we're seeing all those roadway networks on there that we can see. Because once again, the idea is when a plat comes through, to be sure that we're providing those connection points. So transportation is not, so we all want to limit traffic and congestion and try to line up where, where collectors are meeting and things like that. So that's, that's an important goal.
Do you, do you have any specific ideas or recommendations between these options that you think would be the most appropriate for us to pursue?
I, I think working with the MPO to try to modify what they have is probably the best, best approach. That also sort of puts the county in a situation where, where, yes, you're working with another, another partner organization, so that could be slower to do, but probably ideal to work with the MPO on that. But you could also, a lot of counties do adopt their own thoroughfare plan network that's can be based upon the MPO network and modified from there. So there's, so there's options you have if you didn't want to go with the, with the MPO route, but that's probably the best course and what we would, what we would recommend.
I would have to agree with you because I think we've got a good MPO. I think they're effective. I think that they did a great job on the two thousand fifty concept thoroughfare plan. But working with them to update that according to what we see and they see. But the MPO also takes into consideration both cities' perspectives as well as the university's perspective. And with relish in what's going on out there, there's a whole new ballgame as far as developing on, you know, in precinct four and on the west side of Brazos County with what's going on out there. So I can't imagine us not working in, in coordination with the MPO to help develop that because they're doing things and get input from the community, from the county at large that we're not geared to do nor, I think a lot of it would be duplication of effort, and we're not geared to dealing with that. And they're the professionals in that regard.
And then I think having that internet agency coordination is important because as we go back to when we were talking about too, and, you know, what the state legislature is gonna do, if, once again, they, they remove ETJs completely, well, you know, when we go to the arterials that are shown on that map, who's the agency responsible for really getting those arterials on, on the, on the map when we see plats come through? Well, they'll be dedicating that when the plat comes through the commissioners' court now, rather than if the change happens, not the, not the cities.
Thanks.
Action four, clearly define the application of separate but related standards in the document. There's some outlining in tabular form for some standards that govern certain aspects of development outside the, the ETJ. So what are, because if you remember, in our ETJs, that's more where we're working with our partner cities to do that. But what is, who's responsible for reviewing and, and processing the plat when we're just in our completely unincorporated, un-ETJ'd areas? Have some clarification that we need to add in there. And then also clearly show which process and process flow of the subdivision regulations, the, the engineering design guidelines, or the Bryan-Collage Station Unified Guidelines apply. Because it's referenced multiple times in, in the subdivision regulations, so there's some clarity that we just need to say, like, when we're looking at some of these engineering standards, you know, what regulations are, are we applying? So just, once again, because if, you know, we have our development community looking at our regulations, we want to be sure that those are, you know, they're not questioning whether it's like, is it out of the engineering design guidelines? Is it out of the Bryan-Collage Station Unified Design Guidelines? So there's clarification, make sure that all of our engineering standards in the county cover, cover everything that someone needs to develop their, their land. So that's the action item four.
So let's follow it back with item number two, I believe it was, on ETJs and whether they're there or not. But regardless, what you're saying is, is whether they're Brazos County Engineering Desired Guidelines or, and it says Unified Design Guidelines, but I mean, they're really ordinances, UTOs, for both the cities, and they're both different. Not to a huge extreme, but how do you handle the situation if ETJs completely go away by having engineering design guidelines for the county that represent what the future desired conditions for development outside of the cities?
Because we're gonna look at, there'd be really two types of development, you see, because let, let's just go under the argument that most of our cities aren't gonna expand right now their city limits. And so as we grow as a state, we're adding millions of people over the next ten years, and suburban, urban type of development is gonna, if our cities are limited, they cannot expand. All that's really just spilling out over into the outside of the cities. So that's really urban or suburban development happening in, in the unincorporated areas. So as a county, we still need those municipal-style regulations that are gonna be for whether it's the concrete streets, curb and gutter, all that stuff, because it's gonna be really development that probably should be happening inside the city and would happen inside the city if they, they were annexed. And you could have the resources to really help maintain those, those more costly things of infrastructure. And so I think we're gonna have those urban-style regulations that, that the county would need to have in this situation. But then we're still gonna have where we're several miles outside of our cities, and it's just a rural development of ten lots trying to go on, and, and it's just a bar-ditch street, and there's, you know, that's the type of engineering standards we need to have out in the, out in the rural areas that are gonna be rural for a long time. But if we're gonna have to accommodate the urban-suburban type development, then we may need to have, we're, as a county, we'll have to have the engineering standards that cover those type of developments, but then also we're gonna have to be handling the, the rural type of developments. And like I said, unfortunately, the, the state legislature is sort of, you know, really handicapping the cities because it's like the whole intent of having those ETJs is that the cities could go annex that and take those areas over and provide the services for the roads, police, fire, all, all that stuff. But now, you know, of course, I mean, I don't like paying taxes either. I know people don't want to pay taxes, but, you know, development outside the city seems attractive because you have lower taxes and you're not having to pay that. But eventually, those, those type of infrastructures need to be paid for. And so, you know, how are we gonna pay for those in the future? But anyway, hopefully having good engineering design guidelines, these pieces of infrastructure will last for, last for a long time.
Yeah, I think one of the issues is, is, I know for particularly in precinct one, is, is the CCNs for electric and water, College Station's not there. I mean, there's nothing that College Station can expand arylwise into where they aren't asking the current residents of the city College Station to subsidize services on their behalf because they can't get the revenue from electric or water. And, you know, the question they have to ask themselves is, is do we really want to expand our boundaries knowing that it's gonna cost the existing citizens of College Station money to extend the, and it, the, the city services, fire, police, all those types of things into areas where they can't capture the revenue stream over those two enterprises? Because those two enterprises alone contribute a significant amount of revenue to the operations and to the budget of the city of College Station. and to the budget of the city of College Station. Two different worlds.
Yeah. And it, it's difficult for the developers too because they, they don't have it easy because it's, you know, they're trying to make sure that their developments work and, you know, they're going to sell homes eventually to, to make all that stuff and, you know, people are going to move into those homes and those are going to be families and that's all, that's all great. And so, but when we run into situations where it's like that and it's difficult to say like, okay, city's not really incentivized to go into this area because it doesn't make sense because they got to be responsible for the current taxpayers and all that. So, so that's sort of a, you know, a difficult situation, how that, that's going to, going to develop. So some of these, some of these are very tough questions once you get down and, and they can be hyper local, once you get, look into where CCNs and, and all those, all those are basically for service areas for, for utilities that, who's going to be providing that? How's that affect development? Hence the creation of muds to really help fund some of those, some of those things. So, but once again, that's another, another level of complexity and.
Right, but the muds still don't have, get electricity and they still don't get water. I mean, a mud can't have those types of enterprises. It's just for physical infrastructure and amenities and those types of things. So wastewater, maybe they would have that because of, you know, if they put up a higher density development, it would be a treatment plant that they would need to accommodate that, but that's all regulated by a whole different entity as far as that goes. And it, it would have to be on a cost basis, self-sustaining. And then the question becomes is, is who do you want to be the, who do you want to have control of that? Is it the, is it the mud? Is it the, anyway?
Yeah.
Lot, a lot of, lot of unclaimed territory out there as a result of what's been going on in the last four sessions of the legislature.
Number five, we talked about revising the engineering standards, Brazos County Engineering Design Guidelines as a companion document to the subdivision regulations, really conducting a full update of those regulations alongside the subregs to ensure consistency, addressing enforcement issues and eliminating cross-referencing errors. Once again, we just want to be sure that we're clear and concise with the, whether it's plating standards or engineering standards, that someone could say like, okay, that's what's required, so I can let my engineer go design whatever they need to design. So that's one of the things, that engineering documents important to address roadways and drainage. Those are going to be some key, key elements that you always want to have a good engineering on. So, but with the current engineering design guidelines, there are some opportunities to go ahead and improve that, some gaps that we'd like to see go ahead and made, made in there. Some things, as sort of you see in that comment, saying that second, third line, talk about, some of those guidelines are sort of nonexistent. So it's a little bit open then to interpretations if we're not clearly showing that, hey, this is, this is how you either design this or you calculate runoff this way. If you're thinking about drainage and how much rain is falling on an area, to figure out how much you need to detain or something like that. So there, there are some standards in there that, that need to be added. So that's another, so you'd probably have a updated subdivisions regulations document and probably would call an engineering standards manual to really outline those engineering things that an engineer would just need to take a look at during the design of a project. Number six, we talk about express and clarify county policy regarding utilities in the right-of-way. We did hear a lot of, a lot of feedback about, you know, consider allowing administrative exceptions to utilities in the right-of-way to reduce relocation costs and conflicts with, with developers. Allow flexibility for extending roadways in cases where natural boundaries or other factors make such extensions infeasible to minimize unnecessary expenses and disruptions. So there may be some situations where if we're expanding a road or something like that, there may be some infrastructure already inside that right-of-way rather than having to go through a lot of expense to really move that outside of the right-of-way. Typically, yes, that, that would be great if we have that outside of the right-of-way, but there could be some development cases or redevelopment cases where some of these, you could look at the site conditions to see if that was really going to propose a significant problem in, in that situation. So there's some flexibility that I think the court could have to look at that on a, on a case-by-case basis. I don't think that would lead to every case of someone coming and asking to put all the utilities in the right-of-way, but I think that would be looked at more as the exception to the rule. But having a little bit of flexibility to where we locate those or where a developer would locate those infrastructure elements in the, in the right-of-way.
Do you, do you see in your experience where in part of granting easements for utilities in existing right-of-ways, if there, there comes a future need to expand whatever that roadway is, where you make sure that the cost is either shared or all upon the entity that we've granted the easement to? Is that part of what you see that are, are best practices other places other than here?
To, to have some flexibility i- is a good practice to have, to take a look and see like, are there situations where there could be an exception, exception to the rule? And, and that's a pretty, pretty standard practice. But to sort of know the extent of the cases that, that we have going, going forward, because yes, we don't want to open the door for everyone to ask for an exception, exception to the rule. We have the rule for a reason because if there's work that needs to be done, those things being an easement outside of the right-of-way makes things a, a little bit, well, not a little bit, making things, if we're maintaining and doing stuff, having that not in the right-of-way is, is beneficial. So, but once again, looking at the cases where like, if there's some type of geology or something like that where it's like, you know, we, there's just been a new however big inch line laid for some reason, you know, could that exist in the right-of-way for a little bit? That could probably be the case. But as you mentioned, you know, given that exception, you know, there could be cases to say like, all right, we, we still want to have the easement if we need to come back and relocate this if we don't think it's, you know, it's nice to have so we don't have to go back and purchase anything because we don't want to try to, we do want to set up the county for success in the future so they're not having to go back and purchase easements or purchase additional right-of-way, those type of things. So I think there's some, some steps we can look at to say, yeah, we can, we can have that flexibility to allow some of these exceptions, but to say generally the rule is, we have the rule for a reason and, you know, but yes, we'll, we'll look at exceptions. And, and that's pretty, pretty common.
Well, I guess my, my, my major question is, is the, the cost of relocation as we grow. And, and that's the, I mean, that, that was one of the limiting factors on us being able to collaborate with the city of College Station on Greens Prairie because of the cost of the utility relocations, particularly relative to Welburn SUD. They've got a huge water line that's running through there and that was a significant amount. But as we grow, are there ways that you can write into these development regulations with regard to utilities in county right-of-ways and easements where if growth requires for the relocation of those utilities, that that cost is shared between the utility and the county or is written in a way that it would require the user of that easement or right-of-way to bear the cost of relocation of those utilities? And I'm not familiar enough with when we grant those types of rights in county-owned rights-of-way, whether or not we do that. But I think it's proactive to say, hey, you know, this is an area, if we take a look back to our coordinated traffic plan with the MPO, we'll know where those areas of potential growth are going to be, where we're going to need to expand those things. And it costs a lot of money to relocate those utilities when that expansion's necessary if we can get to where we're thinking out ahead of time and require that relocation of those utilities that we allow be born either shared by the county and whoever is using that utility or whoever is, or that it be completely borne by them. I think that's important to make those types of determinations. You don't want to limit a, you know, one of the utilities from being able to provide the appropriate services for water and electricity or whoever it is for the development, but at the same time, when it comes time to expand, you know, those, those, those costs are very, very expensive, particularly when it comes to water. I know that we dealt with that one on INGN with Welburn SUD and, you know, but if we had standards for, hey, if we do this and we do this here, this is the way we're going to do this if redevelopment and expansion requires relocation of those utilities. And I don't know, y'all see those as best practices among communities that are developing that are bigger than us or whatever. You know, I think some insights into how you handle that's the best appropriate process to handle that is very important for our future growth.
And I'd say, because in the, in the county realm, it's of course a little, little different than the, than the city realm where, you know, you'd have some of the responsibilities for if the city needs to upgrade the, the water line or if there's some type of development going on and there's some proportional sharing between the developer and the city to, to upgrade, grade the water line. When we look at, you know, our county infrastructure and the different things that we have, I, I think that's something we can take a, take a look at to see if there's ways that we can go back and try to either get some cost participation when a development is occurring to whether it's oversize a line, there's proportionality that would, that would go with that. But that's just to make sure that everyone's, you know, treated, treated fairly. But thinking about when we expand infrastructure, you're right, that, that's an important element and I think there's some things that we could take a, take a look at that because we'll need more infrastructure in the future, not, not less.
I'd like to make the assumption that we're not going to grow, but I mean, that's, you know, I mean, I think it was Austin that had that mentality that if we don't build it, they won't come, maybe about 30 years ago.
Yeah.
It didn't work out too well.
Yeah. Moving on to number seven, include a legal process to establish vesting and sort, and fair notice claims. So when we talk about vesting, what that is, is when someone comes and starts a project that they're basically vested or they're sort of locked in to the regulations when they, when they start their development. So let's say someone's doing a development now, in a year, we update the county standards and those get adopted and we have a new engineering standards manual and, and things like that and a development's still, you know, being built right now. They're, they're vested into the regulations when, when they start it. So these newer regulations, they wouldn't necessarily have to comply with, they're, they're sort of locked in to the regulations that they have. But, and, and that's some state law that we, that we address with that. And they have some standards for, of course, you know, sometimes projects go dormant, sometimes projects are abandoned, so just because you have necessarily that, that plat, it's not like a guarantee that when you resume, because sometimes these things can sit dormant for 10 years or something like that. So you don't necessarily want to be going over 10-year, 10-year-old standards. But we do have a process that we need to follow according to the Local Government Code, Chapter 245. Also clarify regulations on the expiration of approved but unfilled plats, plans, distinguish between dormant development projects and those with delays while meaning, once again, Chapter 245. So just allowing people to go through. And, and that's all good, we're just, we're trying to treat everyone fairly in the, when we, we're looking at development. It's important, that's providing growth for the county, growth for the state, homes for, for families and, and that's all important. But we also need to be sure that we're looking out for future, the current taxpayers, future taxpayers and making sure that we have a good infrastructure system, road network, all that.
So we need to have a monitoring of what's going on in Local Government Code, Chapter 245, because that's where the bar moves as we move forward. We need to have a process of being able to look at what's happening under Chapter 245 of the Local Government Code.
Correct, because, because what you'll have is when regulations are updated, you can have a claim to say like, oh, hey, you know, you have these new standards, but you know, I'm here in the middle of my pro, project of, of building this, you know, don't want the standards to change. Because that could happen in, in a review, basically you're going to have new engineering standards and, and this is probably a better way to fix an old issue. You would technically still allow someone to build under the old thing that maybe have an issue and that's, that's legally allowed, even though we probably have, now we could of course encourage someone, ask them to voluntarily comply, but when we're reviewing, what do we review as? That, that's what that 245 helps us to understand.
So the conditions of grandfathering should be addressed relative to actual time elapsed since? Or should, okay, so you're, you're suggesting putting in limits that say, if we don't do something, if, if there's not something that happens up to this point on your project development, then, and, and the rules change, then you're subject to those rules change? If not, okay.
Yeah, because, because the state law defines what progress towards completion.
Right.
So there's, there's, if, if you're working on the project, no one's trying to slam the door, but there has to be a point where it's like, okay, this is, this is a new project and you need to follow the new rules because we don't want to, because if, because if there was, if you take 245 to its wildest extent, you'd say like, well, you know, there, why ever update new rules if you can never make anyone follow the new rules so that, you know, we'd just be under whatever rules we ever had.
Okay, what, what do y'all see in practices, best practices that are out there that counties that address this action item that we're talking about here? What do they, what do they incorporate into their subdivision regulations?
There, well, we do have to follow 245 as far as allowing people to be vested.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we violate state law.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no. But, but what, what they, what they tend to do is, and I'm going to speak in generalities here, you know, people in development community, they have a level head, they, they, they want quality development in there. No one likes the rules being changed on them, why they're in the middle of a project. That is, that is understandable. So, but when we're looking at ways where, if we look at the current regulations, things are confusing, it's hard to interpret things, we have overlap, we have missing pieces, but we do have these rules that we can go ahead and go, well, I'll just call them the newer rules, that really solve a lot of these issues and that it's not going to be, you know, nothing gold-plated or, you know, you know, just not needed. I mean, we have, these are, when you deal with zoning and subdivision regulations, they're the minimum standards. I mean, th- these things shouldn't necessarily be things that, you know, are really controversial. Yes, they do cost money and that's, that's important because when you're talking money, that's, that's, that's really important. So, but, but so when we get to new regulations and how to implement those, it's, it's working with your development community, working with staff and, you know, because ultimately plat gets approved by, by the commissioners' court, construction plans come in, a little bit different also if we're working in our ETJs about who's reviewing those plans and so, it, it can look different, but, so I would say, you know, moving forward, it's working with the development community just to try to get all those projects that are currently in the queue just done or, or modified to go with the new regulations. So, but it, but it, it's a common, every time we update regulations, we just have to work with them if there's a current case.
Yeah, I worry about that. I, if someone is in process and we do adopt new regulations, that might change their process. I think it's incumbent upon us to honor the process or lack, or honor the regulations or even lack of regulations that might have been there before we updated the process in the middle of their project. I would, I would hate for us to ask for a lot of modifications of existing projects when we adopt this, just my two cents as I heard that, that was. at just my two cents. As I heard that, that was, that's something that really sticks out to me that I think we need to do. We need to not ask people to change things in the middle of projects.
Yep.
And I, I'm not saying you're advocating for that. I was just wondering.
No, no.
We also add in like appeals process where if, say you're, you're at this end of the spectrum and the regulations are at this end of the spectrum, but you've got an ongoing or dormant project, there's a process whereby you can come in and say, well, I'll meet the regs up to this point, but I really want to not have sunk costs over here. So can I kind of split the difference and go 50/50? And sometimes that can result in things kind of getting unstuck and keeping development moving so that we're not standing in the way of development, but we're still getting the things that are sort of the most important to the county according to the current standards. So building in a kind of coherent appeals process into the subregs is, is another one of those best practices that a commissioner Aldrich asked about.
So what we're really talking about is, is in the future to make sure that we have appropriate development in the county regardless of ILAs, regardless of ETJs, assuming, you know, who knows what's going to happen with them, but that we, that we need to have a more interactive and robust relationship with and communication with developers, whoever they may be, not just now, but in the future, in order to make sure that we're on the same page, trying to get the same goals. So, you know, I feel good about that. I think that we're making steps that direction. But it, it's going to be important that we make sure that that continues in the future. Do you have any thoughts as far as counties that have processes in place that help to, for lack of a better way of describing it, a quality circle, a, a deming type of approach to making sure that we're, you know, what's, what are some of those processes that are, that you can put into subdivision regulations that keep you up to speed?
Well, the, this process that we're doing here with the diagnostic report is a great process because it starts with first the stakeholders. So it was county staff, county elected officials, the development community, homeowners, those, those type of people who are going to really use the subdivision regulations. And to sort of continue that dialogue and moving forward, different options, you know, can include the pre-application meeting that we have. One of the, one of the elements I'll talk about here is, you know, having some, like a development application handbook, which is a very useful tool to have the applications and all the checklist and the flow chart that, you know, you could just really hand somebody to say like, here's, here's how we do the process in Brazos County. So, so here's your different options. Because I think as most people who want to develop property, they're going to want to just look and quickly find what the regulations are. If I can see it in a flow chart, that's great. Maybe I'll just give my, my engineer the engineering standards manual and then let them, because, because, I mean, they're going to have probably best practices that, that they have. And yeah, they need to look at the engineering standards manual, but all that stuff's going to make sense to them. Now, what some other communities have done, and it's been more on the municipal side, whether it's a quarterly developers council meeting or something like that. I think what was really successful about this project, project is, as I was mentioning, it's just listening to what people had to say and what was going on. And so hearing about, you know, because we asked about different, you know, working with the county or, or the cities, you know, what do you guys prefer to do or what's been sort of the track record? And, you know, the responses were different. Sometimes it moves and floats around to, to, you know, working with the different, different entities. Sometimes this one's better, sometimes that one. But I think that dialogue of just listening to make sure that, hey, we're not, yes, we're, at the end of the day, the county's responsible for maintaining this infrastructure for the rest of, for the rest of time. And we need to have quality infrastructure. And that's what we're really concerned about with, you know, looking at 20 and 30 years when roads need to be repaired and this is all taxpayers' dollars doing that because we're all doing our best to, you know, make sure that we're, we're maximizing the tax dollar as much as we can. Development community can help us out by, of course, installing good infrastructure, having, you know, following the subdivision regulations. And, but of course, you know, it's important to listen to say, you know, what, what do you people need as you're, you're going through this process that, that we can help, help, help that? Because it's like, if we have our process clear and concise and have good standards, I think as long as the rules don't change, as long as, you know, we're treating everybody fairly, the regulation should be received well and, and we can get our infrastructure that we need to have, have installed. So, but I think that just listening, whether it's a quarterly meeting, sort of like, you know, what we had at the stakeholder input, I think that's good. And, and your, your, you know, county staff can do that. It could be a quarterly meeting just so to, to hear. Or it could be in a format like this and it could be a little bit more open comment, too. And so we could have public speakers and things like that. So there's some, there's some options. Now, having the, the, a dedicated meeting like that's a little, little bit different, but normally it's a developers council meeting that meets with the commissioners court or the local council. So there's some options there. But I think just listening and hearing the feedback from the, from the development community.
Is there anybody that does something like a quarterly with staff, but an annual on that fourth quarter with a, with commissioners court? To kind of, to, to look at all of the, I don't, I don't think that it, it behooves us to, you know, the commissioners court to spend quarterly time and, and that. But getting an update of, hey, this is where the trend's headed. This is where things are going. This is where new legislation is pointing to, to changing things to where you do quarterlies for three times and then the annual one, you consolidate and have the com- the communication where you have public input from developers as well as from staff relative to, hey, this is, this is, as a commissioner, here's what you need to know about where things are going and where things stand?
And, and some of the more, more high-growth communities, what may happen is, there, there are sort of two options. Staff can attend. Sometimes there's a developer council that they just meet amongst developers to say, you know, what they're talking about. And staff could attend that and be a part of that conversation. But in, in other cases, it is nice to sort of bring developers, if they have time, to come in and to, to meet with staff. Sometimes they will like to, yes, meet with staff because they're working with them on a projects every month. So, so they actually do know the staff. So sometimes it's nice to, to talk. But also sometimes I think probably once a year, it'd be nice to have that, as you were mentioning, in front of the court. Because sort of when you're, when you're working with your, with your partner on the other side, if you're the developer and you're working with the county staff and you have that day-to-day conversation, sometimes it's good to come to the elected officials just that once a year so you can, you can hear and, and they know that the, the whole court was able to, because, because they know probably what the county staff, you know, because they're listening to the comments all the time, just with development cases and things like that. But then that once a year with the court would be a beneficial time for you just to hear, hear what they have to say.
Thanks.
Sometimes that can be like done in conjunction with a chamber of commerce or builders association, like a, like a lunch and learn.
You can't hear you. Could you come speak into the mic, please?
I just wanted to add, oftentimes that can be done in conjunction with like a chamber of commerce, like Brazos Valley or Ryan College Station, chamber of commerce has lunch and learns. Sometimes that can be sort of cross-pollinated between those other, other organizations as well. So it's not all in the county to organize those events.
Improve, number nine, talking about improving and streamlining the process to construct and inspect infrastructure. So of course, one of the, one of the comments that we heard was, you know, sometimes, you know, going through the development process and getting things inspected, there's some, you know, some issues with that, with, you know, hearing or getting the, the different feedback and doing the punch list and those different things. So I think there's some opportunities to improve and streamline that process. We can review, revise the design specifications and construction procedures to ensure that roadways meet the county standards and clarify responsibility for, for completing those improvements. Specify the point at which right of ways and road infrastructure occurs to avoid county control maintenance and improvements before completion. And then also explore, exploring third-party inspections for, for, for infrastructure when we're having a lot of, a lot of cases come through. Because once again, we're trying to do things quickly. So, so there's some opportunities to streamline the process of construction and inspection of infrastructure. Number 10, revise how the county distinguishes between rural and urban development types, release that, that acre, acre threshold. So looking at revising the specific criteria used to differentiate between those urban and rural types to ensure the development standards accurately reflect current ownership and, and maintenance. So looking at if we have roads dedicated, this gets into that second bullet there. If we have roads dedicated, are those going to be dedicated to the county? Are those going to be dedicated to, to a mud or some type of municipal management district? Because ideally, we talked a little bit about, yes, cities are limited to expansion, but we're having more suburban, urban style development. You have 40-foot wide lots, things like that, even less when we're out in the ETJ because we don't, there's no zoning, zoning control for, for density. But, so there's some opportunities to take a look at like, well, who's going to maintain that road infrastructure when we're getting a little bit more into our denser development? Is that going to be the county? Should that be a mud or a municipal management district? Different opportunities to, to take a look at that. Because once again, looking into the, into the future, that's a lot of maintenance dollars that the county's not necessarily set up to, to maintain. Because if we look at what, you know, going back to what counties were doing, it's just really main roads connecting different parts of the counties together, not really in the subdivision road maintenance business that development was in, in cities. But once again, state laws changed for cities and counties. So that type of development happens now in the county. So how do we, how do we fund that, fund that road infrastructure? If I had a magic wand, I would, I would undo that and, and let all those developments just be in, be in the city because they would have the resources to, to manage that. They can grow out their infrastructure. Won't necessarily have to have all these different muds and, and things like that. Controlling infrastructure would be a little bit more simpler to maintain and operate, in my opinion. But that's just my opinion and I don't have a wand. So, but those type of things I think would really be something to take a look at. But we have to process that as a county now to say like, how are we going to do this infrastructure? And, because it's not what really counties were set up to do with our, how much we charge in taxes. Number 11, clarify drainage requirements and expectations. Talk about implementing drainage solutions such as ditches, wells and detention facilities on private property. One of the comments that we had there is that, you know, the county doesn't have a drainage ordinance.